Who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and bid us none to temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory, forever and ever. Amen.
A pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. The flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. We will move to item D, the swearing in of firefighter paramedic Josh Bernard. Come on up. Yes, sir. Okay, repeat after me. I, Joshua Bernard.
I, Joshua Bernard.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Ohio.
And the state of Ohio.
The charter and ordinances.
Charter and ordinances.
And the resolutions of the city of Napoleon, Ohio.
And the resolutions of the city of Napoleon, Ohio.
The laws of the state of Ohio.
The laws of the state of Ohio.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
And perform all duties.
And perform all duties.
And coming upon me as a firefighter, paramedic.
Coming upon me as a firefighter.
For the city of Napoleon, Ohio.
The city of Napoleon, Ohio.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to my best of my ability and understanding.
Picture there, please. Did everyone get pictures of him up here?
He needs his badge.
Pardon me?
His badge.
He's got it.
Come on up.
Yep. So this is Natalie, my girlfriend, and this is Ellie, my daughter.
Nice to meet you. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself? You being a firefighter.
So my name is Josh Bernard. Moved into Napoleon about six years ago. Been a lot of the city. I was in the EMT class and joined the fire department, and then there they put me through fire class. I actually did think that I enjoy the fireside as much as I did, but I do. I loved every second of it. And I just kept moving forward, got a paramedic, and fell in love with the career. And I don't feel like I'm working on here, so I'm glad to be here. Glad to finish off my career here.
Welcome. And Chief Bowen, you have any words you'd like to say?
Well, Josh pretty much said that all of it. He did start on our part-time side. We worked him up through, got his certifications, and then he became a full-time for us last year and made first. Josh is a huge asset to not only the city as a whole, but to the fire department. So last year, he did receive the EMS Provider of the Year. He's received a couple of life-saving awards throughout his career. It always seems like he's kind of the dark cloud. All the bad calls seem to follow him. So we've really gotten to benefit from some of the experience he has because he does work in Williams County as well, and then just got hired part-time and put in bay as well. So the experience he gains outside the city, he brings back to the city, and our people benefit from that as well. So he is a pleasure to have, even though we like to give him a hard time. But it is good to have him, and we are lucky to have him with us.
Anybody come up here and get a picture taken with him?
Of course.
Come on, Joe, you're not getting out of this. Oh, Josh is actually the first full-time hire that I did since I've been here as the fire chief. So this one's a little special to me as well.
Nice.
All right. Everyone is more than welcome to stay. If you don't, I wouldn't say I blame you. See what happens when you say that? That's right. Open his eyes to leave.
I heard a siren. They had to go.
Yeah, he did say everything.
All right. We will move to item E, the approval of minutes from the April 15th, 2024 regular council meeting. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the minutes shall stand approved. I'm hearing none. They will stand approved. Item F, citizen communication. If anyone is in the audience or online or would like to comment or address counsel on anything that is outside of the agenda, please let us know. We'll be happy to address that. Item G, reports from council committees. G1, the Finance and Budget Committee did not meet on April 22nd due to lack of agenda items. The Safety Human Resources Committee did not meet on April 22nd due to lack of agenda items. And the Technology Communications Committee did not meet earlier tonight due to lack of agenda items. Item I, introduction of new ordinances and resolutions. We have none tonight. Item J, second reading of ordinances and resolutions. There are also none tonight. Item K, third reading of ordinances and resolutions. K1 is resolution number 007-24, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds in excess of $50,000 for the purpose of performing the 2024 sanitary sewer flow monitoring update and to award said project to Stand Tech Consulting Inc. and declaring an emergency. This is currently tabled. Do we need a motion to untable?
Yes, Council President.
Do we have a motion?
Motion, second.
Thank you. And do we need a motion for the resolution?
Well, let me... Yes, we will.
So you want to untable at first?
Okay. We are untabled at this point.
I motioned, he's second.
So you have it. Oh, sorry. Michaela, please call the roll.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
All right. Floor is yours, Andy.
Thank you. As we've discussed previously, this is an exercise that has been required by the Ohio EPA as part of the findings and orders. There have been six studies completed since 2008, and all of the studies were performed by Stand Tech. In a meeting with the Ohio EPA a couple of weeks ago as part of our annual combined sewer overflow slash sanitary sewer overflow review, there was a determination made by them that we can hold off on doing the study until the East Washington Street work is done to the plant. That could potentially be five or six years before we have to do this study. In terms of dollars and cents, that saves us up to a quarter million dollars, at least for the time being. So it's kind of a big deal. So as part of that, I will ask that council defeat this resolution, and then hopefully in the distant future, we'll bring it back eventually with one more flow study after we complete the work down to the plant.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Questions or comments from council? I'm hearing none. Michaela, please call the roll.
Tom?
No.
Dr. Dave?
No.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
No.
Ken?
No.
Bob?
No.
Jordan?
No.
Okay.
Redo.
Yeah. I want the mayor to ask for reconsideration. Actually, your positive vote would be... No, it wouldn't be. No, I'm sorry. No.
It's already defeated. It's one to six. She doesn't need to re-vote.
Yeah, that's true.
It's okay.
It's fine. It's funny, but it's fine. I was thinking the same way you were thinking. I'm not used to all those no votes. Thanks for thinking like me.
Yeah. That's what I'm here for.
Okay. That will be defeated on the third read. We will move to item K2, resolution number 009-24, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds in excess of $50,000 for the purpose of designing the reconstruction of East Washington Street Improvements Project and to award said project to Peterman and Associates, Inc. and declaring an emergency. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you.
And as Council President, there are no changes since the last reading.
Comments or questions from council? I'm hearing none. Michaela, please call the roll.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany? Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Okay. That will pass on third read under emergency. K3, ordinance number 011-24, and ordinance amending a section of the chapter 939 of the City of Napoleon codified ordinances, specifically section 939.05, net metering, also amending ordinance number 056-12. Is there a motion?
A motion.
Second.
Thank you. Ian?
Yes, Council President. Once again, since the last reading, there have been no changes.
Any questions or comments from council?
Just going to ask it for all on the same page on this. I followed up a little bit a couple of times, and I've gotten the same answer back a couple of times, that this is not a system issue, that this is more of a dollars and cents issue. And I'm struggling because I feel like we haven't had any conversation around dollars and cents, and it's only been a system-issue conversation. So I guess I'm asking again, do we believe that this truly is system-related? Do we believe that it's dollar or cents-related? And are people thoroughly versed enough to understand where their vote is lying on this? I'm not pushing to sway votes. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page before we make this third read.
Andy, would you like to speak to that?
Sure. Yeah, it is primarily system-related. That was the feedback that we received back last August when I made an effort to increase the load. I never gave an amount. I just showed that there were some communities that went as high as 500 KW. And at that time, the argument was made by the electric department that they were very uncomfortable with that. And both Board of Public Affairs and the Electric Subcommittee defeated any move to add anything. And it wasn't until we were approached again by automatic... not automatic feed, by a custom hack to increase, asked for another look at it, that we looked at it, and after talking with the electric department, we decided that 100 KW was a good number to start with. As I've said in the past, I looked through 90 different communities and what they offer. Only 30 of them had anything out there that I could find, 30, 32. And of those, 20 of them, or two-thirds of them, were 100 KW or less. And of those 20, I think only six were 100 KW, and the other ones were less than that. So we felt like 100 KW was a good number to start with. Now, in terms of the money issue, the financial issue, absolutely it's an issue. I mean, we have an electric department that is sized to support the system that we currently have. And whether people are using solar or otherwise to get their power, we cannot change the size of our electric system. So every kilowatt that is taken by them for solar is taken off of our revenue or out of our revenue. So yes, it is a financial issue as well as a system-wide issue. But when the argument was first made way back when, it was system reliability. And as I said before, and I'll say again, we are first-class in terms of reliability. We just got another award. So we really don't want to risk that at this time and feel like this is a good first step.
I guess the only frustration that I'm having is I'm having... I've sent a couple of emails. I've had a couple of phone call conversations. I've continued to hear this isn't a system issue. This is purely a dollars and cents issue, which could be a lack of communication, a miscommunication. I understand that, and I can acknowledge that. I guess, has the committee, has council, do we feel like we've addressed this thoroughly enough on the ask that we haven't even attempted, I mentioned, getting rid of net metering completely and not giving credit to help disincentivize oversizing? I've mentioned trying to slice this in a way where we still get some of those maintenance costs built in, but they're still getting the value on the actual consumption of the power. I just feel like we're not getting any movement. If that's where people are comfortable, that's fine. I can eat it. But I guess I'm just looking for feedback or where people are at, why... I guess I'm trying to understand where the votes are at and why you guys believe this. And then the other issue is I just continue to hear there is a system issue, there is a system issue. And if we're not confident in the answer of it, I don't know that I'm in favor of making that final vote.
I think that's the greatest question, is will there be a system issue? And I think the answer that we will give is we don't want to have a system issue, so let's start with this and move forward. If we determine that it was absolutely no effect on our system, then we can talk about getting greater or offering greater. But right now, I think this was where we were comfortable with.
And to address that and just combat it slightly is why don't we make that barrier to entry higher? Make it harder to get onto the grid? Require the engineering studies? Require that the system be looked at instead of just hoping that it's not a problem? Or just experimenting and saying, we'll start with 100 and then go further? Why not allow the actual engineering practices to take place before moving forward?
Well, I think at some point, you're going to put up a barrier that's enough that nobody would want to do it. And if this allows them to step into it to see where they are, or what it does for them. And again, at that point, everything goes well smoothly. There's no blips. Then we can look at raising it. But I think you can also put enough obstacles in there that when you think you're doing the right thing, in the end, they're going to say, we can't do that. We're not going to do that. There's too many obstacles. Anybody else?
I think from my perspective, Jordan, solar energy can be even a contentious issue, as it is right now in Madison County. They're proposing the largest solar field, 6,000 acres.
Yep.
And it's very political. And solar energy, it also is a highly... well, it used to be subsidized. It's tax credits. It's large corporations. Campbell's Soup, I think their last solar field was probably 2012, wasn't it? So for me, I would rather take the approach first, the council, or the, I should say, it's allowing one step, as Andy has said. So I'm fine with that, but there's a lot more to it. And, you know, as far as the county commissioners have taken some action, you know, as it relates to solar fields, you know, and farmlands and things such as that. So for me, I would rather take, you know, understand who wants what, where, and see where even where the government's going with it. You know, is there going to be that, you know, tax incentive going forward with a different administration, perhaps? That's where I'm coming from.
And that's partially why I want to give our local businesses the opportunity to take advantage of it while it's there and not be so slow to act that we've cost them that opportunity. So I completely understand your perspective. I'm just on the other side of it, and that's okay.
I think that Andy was saying this is a first step.
Yep.
And it's just to see how things pan out. We don't want to have too much... I like solar, but at the same time, I don't like to have spikes and brownouts. And if this is something that they feel is safe that we can start with, we'll get a good sense of what's going on by our electrical department and reports that they give us, whether, hey, 100, you know, 100K is workable, or we can go more, we can go less. But this is just a first step. I would like to see it go farther, too, but we can't get rid of our base load.
Right.
We have to have the base load. When all of a sudden clouds move in and there is no solar coming in, we have to have power. And when the sun comes out, we can't have it spike too high, or we're going to have problems, too. So it's, I think... I would hope that our electrical department did due diligence, and they know that this is going to be a safe load for what we're using. They've got a lot more knowledge and experience than I do, and obviously.
Yeah, I mean, we have a solar... we put a solar field in Napoleon years ago. You know, and I believe even... I may be wrong, but I think Representative Jim Hoops has submitted legislation for what's called a community solar market. And I won't profess to know understanding what that's about. Obviously, Jim would certainly have a lot of knowledge and maybe, you know, if we need to look at changing things in the future, I would want to get a lot more input from other individuals, including Jim and people such as that, the county commissioners.
Can I say something?
Please.
Also, Jordan, you're asking if I was on the electric committee when we first talked about it. And going back to August 14th, that meeting that we did discuss it, I was involved in that. And I specifically remember Greg talking about there's no reason that we should entertain it at this time because of the system issue. So I'm not sure why you're getting mixed messages now. But he made it very clear that it wasn't something good. He would not recommend it for our system.
And today was no issues at all? Won't be a problem? Not a big deal? It's just a very mixed signal from...
Right.
So it's hard to understand exactly where the truth is. And I just want to understand the... I want to understand all the facts before council makes a movement.
If I could say something?
Just what's good.
I think that a system that works and is in a certain situation and a certain configuration, many people would not want to modify that because we know it works. The concerns were discussed pretty thoroughly, and at the time I sat on that committee, we decided at that time not to continue with it because there may be problems. I think that those questions have been answered. Are there zero possibilities that there'll be problems? The answer is no, but I think that it's manageable. It's like any other system as it grows and becomes more diverse. It will have issues, and there will be learning curves. And also, on the other side of this with the financial part, I feel if there's anything that we can do to make it easier for business and residential customers and so forth to be more, to be less, to be more profitable businesses and to be less burdened with electric bills and us still be able to function our system, I'm all for that. I don't want roadblocks for any business that are unreasonable or punitive. And I think we need to start somewhere with this change. And I know that our department is going to monitor it very closely. And if there are any problems at all, I've been assured, and I think we've all been assured, that the mechanisms are in place that we can stop it almost immediately so that it doesn't damage our system. So I feel very comfortable now. At the time, I was okay with saying no. I feel very comfortable now that with all of that in mind, that I think we should move forward on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that all being said, is there any reason to attempt to slice or dice this where you get the best of both worlds? Or is it your guys' opinion to move forward with it as it stands and address it at a later time?
If I could just continue that on my thought, the answer was yes. In my mind, this was where we wanted to start and see how it went. And then if we want to modify, that's a future, a thing that we are going to discuss in committee probably on a regular basis.
So just using the industrial engineer in me, you set up these rules for a business. They run all their savings calculations based on a 50% net metering credit. You've given them the rules of engagement. They run their numbers. They make their decision. And then you change the rules on them. That's going to cause a really large frustration. So that's why I'm so careful with a starting point or so careful with trying to make sure we've thought this completely through before this is the way that it stands. That's the only reason I'm slicing this, is that, again, I've mentioned it before, I would be in favor of getting rid of net metering completely. Take that off. And at least then if people are running calculations on savings, that part is removed. I'm just trying to simplify and make it so that we're not changing the rules and upsetting people because we said, okay, we're going to start here, and we're going to move somewhere else. I'd rather see us take longer, make one movement, and have it right. And again, if I'm on the flip side of that, that's okay. I'm not going to be... I'm not going to keep here, sitting here and trying to convince people. That's not the point. I'm just trying to make sure that everybody's thought through all these things.
I think businesses, some of those can be modular, and they can expand if they wish and you give them the opportunity to expand. So it's not like they're stuck with, you know, one size because they can add to. And they would be able to expand as a business to grow the solar field or solar capability. I don't know. I think this is going to be a learning experience for our electrical crew also, and that's why we want to start at this. I think they kind of did. And Andy did their due diligence of how much energy we use in our system and what would be a safe amount according to other people that have experience. Having another study, it would delay, and I think it would add cost. And if we can do this safely, we can evaluate how things have worked in the future time. And that's my thought.
Just to be clear, I would put the cost on the customer coming onto the grid. That would be my proposal. That's how it's done in other grids that I've had that experience with. The customer who's asking to come onto the grid is in charge of that cost. It's not on the city. It's not... You build that into the rules before they're allowed to tie on. So I do acknowledge, and I think you're right, I don't want to have us study it again. I would be asking that they pay for a study to ensure that everything is set up correctly before they come on.
If we do have it set up where it can be done safely, we would not only be holding up us, we would be holding up the businesses that want to make this work, that have asked to, hey, can we expand and have more? We would like a bigger slice of what we can do. I just feel this is a starting point. That's just the way I feel.
With that said, we will vote on this matter. Michaela, please call the roll.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?[1727.42]
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
No.
Okay, that will pass on third read. Moving on to item L, Good of the City, L1, Discussion or Action, Adult Use Cannabis. Andy?
How about if I pass that along? That's just fine. So our moratorium expires on July 31st, which is about three months away. We don't have state rules yet, but in, in an effort to put it back in front of council so it doesn't get dropped, I ask that this be added to discussion action. We need to take some action at some point. Certainly, that actually could be to extend the moratorium while we wait and see, learn some more, see what anybody wants to do. But it's been my experience in discussing this and medical marijuana in the past, that there wasn't a whole lot of reception for, for allowing this. So if we're spinning our wheels and wasting our time on moratoriums and discussion that nobody really wants to have, and it's a, it's a 7-0 vote to prohibit, then we could certainly get those rules drafted as well. I just wanted to throw it back out there to council to see where everybody's at, what you want to do, how we move forward.
Any comments from council?
What, what committee would we send this to for discussion?
I meant municipal properties would make sense, I think. There's going to be some zoning in here too. So it might be a good idea to throw it to, to a committee. It, you know, don't take too long, I guess, depending on what is decided. We've got after today what I think, five more council meetings before the end of Ju-, end of July, so. And certainly, within that time, we could extend the moratorium very easily if that's what council wanted to do. If it's very quickly decided at a committee meeting that we want, that council wants to prohibit or allow, whatever council, council wants to do, then we could draft that. So it's mostly drafted already, both, both ways, so.
Can I say something?
I guess just, let me know, I, I guess what I'm asking is let me, let me know what you want to do, and so we can get moving a little bit.
I guess my recommendation would be to extend the moratorium because we don't have all of the, the rules yet.
Yeah.
From the state.
Sure.
And that was my, my thought from the beginning when you suggested moratorium. I thought that was great because we don't know exactly what it's going to look like or what the rules are. So to either turn it down or approve something that we're not 100% certain on, that would be my, my recommendation.
Yeah, I agree. I, I could see there being more discussion to come, once the rules are kind of more clearly defined. So I would hate to just rule out the possibility of passing something down the road. But if we were to extend the moratorium for now, I think that's a good idea.
I would say sending a committee would be a good idea after we have the rules.
Yeah, and I think that's, I think that's likely to be June, July timeframe, about the same time that our moratorium expires.
Yeah, so, I mean, just extend, I, I tend to agree. Just extending it until we get, until we know what to do.
That makes sense. So if council would direct me to draft legislation extending that moratorium, I, I think I'll draft it to extend it to the end of the year, and that should give us enough time to figure out what we want to do.
That's what I was just going to say.
Is there a motion to draft that legislation?
I would make a motion that we would draft that legislation.
I'll say, thank you. Michaela, please call the roll.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Brittany? Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Thank you, Billy. Item L2, Discussion or Action for the 2024 Sanitary Sewer Cleaning Project, the renewal of contract. Andy?
Yes, Council President, this is a 10-year requirement by the Ohio EPA to clean and televise our entire sanitary sewer system. This 2024 is year 10 of 10. Last year, Advanced Rehabilitation Technology was a low bidder and awarded the contract. When Chad bid it out that last year, he bid it for them to bid for both last year and this year. And as a result of that, Advanced Rehabilitation Technology was also the low bid for this year. So we will request that council pass a motion to allow us to execute a renewal contract with Advanced Rehabilitation Technology in the amount of $94,440.75.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Thank you. Michaela, please call the roll.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Brittany? Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob? Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Thank you, Andy. We will go around the table. Kevin, we'll start with you this evening.
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
Nothing, thanks.
Dr. Davis?
Nothing.
Brittany?
Um, the Glenwood Park, are we still looking good for Friday, or do we?
Yes, they will be having somewhat of an opening ceremony on Friday evening, as well as two games. I believe the games start at 6:00 PM. So they're on, they're going to be buzzing around out there this week trying to wrap things up. It is likely that the press box slash concession stand will not be complete. It may look like it from the outside, but it will not be usable. And they plan on a, a big event out there on Saturday as well because they have games beginning at 10:00 AM, I believe, and running through about 7:00 or 8:00 PM. So it'll be a big day Saturday as well. The opening ceremony is Friday evening.
You said there'll be food, uh, food trucks out there on Saturday?
Yeah, and they will have porta potties as well, for the people, for the spectators, so.
Okay.
Should be ready for it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, I can cross that off my list, thank you very much.
Me too.
Welcome, Michaela, and thank you, Marissa, for everything you're doing, training. And Chief, have a question for you, just how did the, the mock with the accident that you have at the school, how'd that go?
Uh, it went very well, everybody participated. Officer Strickland, of course, does a very good job at that. We were able to get through that and do the mock trial. It's always very impactful for the students to be able to see the whole process and see what type of punishment comes out at the end of the day. Parents that host and, and if somebody breaks or drives, and parents are supporting that type of things. It's always very impactful and we go through the whole thing, so it's definitely went just very well.
Good. Thank you for doing that. Very important, I think. That's all I have.
Mr. Davis?
I have nothing.
Mr. Watson?
I don't have anything special. Andy, you're going to make a recommendation for a...
Yes.
Yeah. In, in the possibility that we're going to have a municipal properties meeting, I'm just going to ask that we move that meeting to 6:00. And he will have an agenda for it shortly.
Okay. Perfect. Jordan?
Yep.
Billy?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Andy?
Yes, and as council, follow up on what Councilman Watson just said, I would like to read further discussion of city-owned properties to the Municipal Properties, Land Use, Building and Economic Development Committee for next Monday, Monday evening. Second thing is, Mike Linglore from AMP, every year he comes in and gives us a power supply portfolio update, which is somewhat interesting. That is next Monday, May 13th, at 10:00 AM here at the council chambers, if any of you might be interested in attending. I suspect it'll probably be a one-hour presentation. That's all I have right now. I, I will ask for an executive session this evening.
I have it. Yes, as Andy mentioned, we do have a request to go into executive session for matters of a competitive, competitive nature relating to a city-owned or operated utility. If we can have a motion to go into executive session, please.
Motion.
Sorry, Kevin. Thank you. Michaela, please call the roll.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Brittany? Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
No action taken there. Andy, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Yes, Council President, I would ask that you direct the law director to draft the necessary legislation to enter into a water contract with the village of Ory.
Perfect. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Michaela, please call the roll.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Brittany? Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Item N, approved payment of bills. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the payment of bills shall stand approved.
I have a question?
Yes, sir.
On page nine, at the bottom of the page, there is playground things that we paid for. Is that normal attrition, or is that a result of the vandalism?
Um, I think, I think it's a little bit of both. I believe some of them were just worn out and developed cracks or holes. But I won't, I can't say definitely that the second was a result of vandalism, but I kind of believe it was.
Yeah. Do we have any kind of insurance on vandalism-type stuff? Or is it just too prohibitive to even have?
Yeah, I, I don't know that we do, but I can certainly look into that. Yeah, I, I don't know that we do.
That's all I have.
Okay. We are going to give the, the mayor of Mulligan on his around the table real quick. Mr. Mayor?
So I opened up a little mail here, and we have a couple of things. One, it says Napoleon Alive, they're having a military emblem installation on the Henry County Veterans Bridge, which is going to occur on Thursday, May 30th, at 10:00 AM. So if anyone would like to attend that, I think that would be great. And also here from the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 8218, there's going to be a memorial service. Looks like they'll have the Lost at Sea Service at the boat ramps, as they have in the past couple of years, at 10:00 AM. From there, we'll proceed to the Henry County War Memorial for the main service, and that will be on Monday, May 27th, Memorial Day. So if anyone is planning on attending the memorial service, if you could, just let me know, so I can let them know how many of us will be there. So I have.
Thank you. Thank you. On item N, the approved payments and bills, those will stand approved. If we can have a motion for adjournment, please.
Okay. Second.
Thank you. Michaela, please call the roll.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Brittany? Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
We are adjourned.